Madam President, I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting for Friday, October 16th. Before we proceed, I'll note that this meeting has remote participation by council members and city staff as authorized under the provisions of Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Section 13D.021, due to the declared state of local public health emergency. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Osmond. Councilmember Osmond. Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Osmond.
Here.
Councilmember Kano. President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum for today's meeting. Our agenda is before us. We do have two amendments. First, we have a request for a security briefing related to the polling places for the 2020 presidential election. And second, Councilmember Ellison is bringing forward a resolution honoring the North Side Oral History Project. Are there any further amendments to our agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Madam President, I'm sorry, there actually are. I'm sorry, there are amendments coming up during the agenda item. My fault, I'm wrong. Thank you.
No problem, Mr. Call. Thank you. Seeing no further amendments to the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda with those two amendments?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Osmond.
Here.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is amended. Adopted, as amended. The minutes of our regular meeting for October 2nd are presented for acceptance. May I have a motion for those minutes?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those minutes are accepted. Next, we have the referral of petitions, communications, or reports to their proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
But carries, and those matters are referred. With that, we'll proceed to the Order of New Business, beginning with the mayor's regular report on the state of our local health emergency, addressing the city's response to COVID-19. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the opportunity to share this regular COVID report, and I will dive right in. To date, we have 18 emergency regulations. There has been a most recent emergency regulation, which was signed just a couple of days ago, and it amends the Paid Leave Emergency Regulation executed in March, and then later amended again in June. To give you a bit of rundown on what this emergency regulation does, is it extends the eligibility for the full-time emergency responders, and there's a definition for what constitutes emergency responders, to take a second bank of 80 hours of paid leave. So if they exhaust their first 80 hours, they then move on to their second 80 hours of leave, and you get to access that leave if they have quarantined or self-isolated as a result of exposure to COVID-19. So the earlier regulations provided for a second bank of hours as a result of being diagnosed with COVID-19, but did not extend eligibility to those having to quarantine simply for exposure. And so the primary difference is that we are now, we are including exposure in this bank as opposed to just diagnosis, which is good precaution in terms of health. And also, it doesn't actually add additional hours ultimately of time off in any case, because any hours not used would have then resulted in PTO. If they decide to use more hours this year, obviously, it's less. So taking the leave in 2020 will reduce any balance of paid time received after that emergency has ended. Given that that's the new emergency regulation, I'll just stop there briefly to see if there are any questions on it.
I don't see any questions. Thanks, Mayor.
So next is the health report by the numbers. Total approximate number of completed tests is 2,403,811. Total positive cases for Minnesota is 117,106. The patients who no longer need to be isolated is 104,547, with 2,199 deaths. Death in Hennepin County, the positive cases are 31,161, with 962 deaths. And the number of healthcare workers who have been exposed in some form, or I guess diagnosed, is 12,024. Hospitalization, 8,652, with total cases hospitalized in ICU at 2,362. For Minneapolis, we've had 11,977 cases, with 1,231 hospitalized, 11,139 recovered, and sadly and tragically, 252 deceased. I won't get into the Minneapolis demographic data, but it is there in your report. If you have any questions, we can certainly answer. Moving on to the Health Department and the Situational Update, as of October 15th, there were 11,977 cases in Minneapolis and 252 deaths. The total number of cases increased by 4.8% over the previous week, and hospitalizations increased by 2.3%, and ICU admissions by 2.2%. Persons under age 35 still make up close to 60% of cases over the past week, but we are starting to see a slight increase in number among ages 65 and older. Again, that's cases of contraction, not death or more serious malady. Average daily cases continue to be in the 70s, with two days over 100 cases diagnosed in the past week. Last time that happened was in July. Minnesota Department of Health is using a color-coded map to track a seven-day rolling average of new cases in Minnesota, and as of October 8th, the state is reporting 22 cases per 100,000, and Minneapolis is at 17 cases per 100,000. So we're below the state average, however, these figures are certainly up from where they were a couple of months ago. These numbers put both Minnesota and Minneapolis in what's called the orange category, which represents accelerated spread. Minnesota Department of Health issued new guidelines for restaurants. Restaurants may increase, according to these guidelines, the number of patrons at a table from 6 to 10. Patrons do not need to be related or live in the same household. Emergency Regulation 17 states that all applicable spacing and capacity limitations are followed per Emergency Executive Order 20-74, and therefore Minneapolis establishments should follow the new guidelines from the state. I'll note that the restrictions as far as bar access still do apply. The Health Department is conducting over 50 cases, case investigations, and contact follow-ups per day for individuals diagnosed with COVID-19, and currently, there are 22 investigators, including six non-MHD enterprise staff. The new AmeriCorps staff are in training and are shadowing current contact tracers. Last week, MHD teamed up with the Minnesota Department of Health and Stairstep Foundation to provide 737 tests over two days, and this was respect to community testing and then also flu shots. That's the slide we're on. Hennepin County provided 81 tests on Thursday, October 8th, and MHD is exploring options for expanding COVID testing through the winter and spring. For food insecurity, MHD received word of an $88,000 grant from Hunger Solutions to continue the Powderhorn Park weekly food distribution through the end of 2020, which, from personal experience, is a very successful and well-organized event. We are looking for additional locations for spacing inside when things do in fact get more cold. It's this is a, it's a, it's an event organized by MHD and the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, and continues to operate on Friday, serving around 200 to 400 primarily Latino community members. The grant will fund the purchase of food, hygiene products, volunteer stipends, and equipment, and other supports for the Corcoran Neighborhood Association to help continuing this event, which we all see as a success. For human resources, there were 19 more reassignments from the Minneapolis Convention Center to the city clerk's office to support work with elections, and I think this was an important shift. These occurred last week. We now have a total of 135 reassignments, and I really do want to applaud our city staff collectively, that have been willing to step up to do work that they may not have originally signed up for when they took this job, but they've realized that, you know, serious times require serious measures, and that their contributions to the city at large are even more felt sometimes when you're willing to be, when they're willing to be flexible. And so I really want to thank everyone who has been willing to make those transitions. Our city certainly appreciates it. As of October 14th, 2020, there has been 5,575,459 spent, and that is the same number as reported at the last council meeting. The report includes only purchases made through the Emergency Purchasing Regulation, which allows for emergency COVID-19 purchases to be expedited to respond to urgent COVID-19 response needs. Purchases through the normal procurement process are not included in this report. I'll move it on. So there, as for public safety, it's obviously not related to COVID-19, however, I believe you should have it in, have information on both MPD, as well as Office of Violence Prevention and FIRE as well in your booklets. As for FIRE, there are a couple of directly COVID-19-related items. You know, I'm just going to skip that. It's in your booklet. If you have any questions, we can do our best. State and federal activity. At the Minnesota Legislature, the House and Senate gavelled in on Monday for the fifth special session of 2020. Governor Walz once again called a special session to extend the executive emergency powers for 30 more days. As in past special sessions, a resolution to dissolve the executive emergency powers was introduced in both the House and the Senate. It was once again approved in the Senate and not approved in the House. Dissolution of the executive emergency powers requires both chambers to approve, so they are extended another 30 days from Monday. And as of October 7th, Governor Walz signed Executive Order 20-91, providing public safety assistance during civil unrest. The provisions of note, for Minneapolis anyway, include the, the, we have an order to state active duty on October 7th, 2020. The personnel, equipment, and facilities needed to provide public safety services and security assistance in the city of Minneapolis, as well as nearby communities. And the agitent general is authorized to procure the goods and services needed to accomplish the mission. The Department of Public Safety, Division of Homeland Security, and Emergency Management will continue to coordinate the provision of onsite support and assistance to the affected local units of government, and assess the needs for supplementary emergency assistance as well. State agencies, in coordination with appropriate federal agencies, will provide assistance to local units of government. The cost of this assistance will be paid from the general fund, as allowed through Minnesota statutes, 2019, Section 192.52. While not directly COVID-related, the House and Senate capital investment shares reached an agreement on a bonding bill, which I'm sure we are all thrilled about, and this bill was passed off the House floor on Wednesday and the Senate floor on Thursday, and it's now headed to the governor for signature. And this is really a huge win for the city, including the bill, there are top bonding priorities of the Upper Harbor Terminal, the Central Storm Tunnel, and Emergency Operations and Training Facility. Additionally, there were a number of other projects from the park board, from Hennepin County nonprofits. I believe Baldwin Square and Juxtaposition were included as well, and all told, the bill will result in $84.7 million of investments across their city. $14.5 million of investments will be in North Minneapolis. A vast majority of these funds are going to BIPOC-led and own businesses and cultural institutions, and nearly all cultural districts are represented in the bonding bill funding. So a huge thank you to our legislative delegation, who fought hard to ensure these projects were funded. Big thank you to our team here at the city that worked really tirelessly to make this bonding bill a reality. Again, thanks all around. I think this is a really important package for Minneapolis, and we're so appreciative. I'm not going to get too into the federal COVID update, but there were some rocky negotiations there at the federal level for a fourth installment of COVID relief, and are continuing, but with, there's little agreement at this point from the Senate, the House, and the White House. As for gap funding, the housing front, community prevention partners, Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, and city staff continue to work through the list to complete the full verification and approval process of each applicant. And as of Wednesday, October 14th, 1,316 applicants have been approved, totaling over $2 million in emergency assistance payments. For the forgivable loan, the small business forgivable loans have been fully awarded, as I've mentioned, with a value of just over $1.5 million, awarded to around 173 small businesses. So thank you for the time today, and I'm happy to stand for any additional questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any questions or comments. I'll pause and see if there are any from councilmembers. I don't see any, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Great. So with that, I will direct the clerk to file the mayor's report. The next item we have is the council's resolution ratifying the existing local public health emergency with an updated draft that includes several amendments, and the clerk will speak to this item.
Thank you, Madam President. As before, with the new emergency regulation that's been enacted, the proposed action is to update the council's resolution, which ratifies that emergency regulation and extends it during the period for which the declared emergency exists, which is tied to the state's declared peacetime emergency. So you'll see in the draft resolution, there is underlined script, which adds the most recent emergency regulation, which Mr. Mayor Frye did describe in his report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May I have a motion to adopt the emergency resolution along with the amendments?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. This brings us to the reports from our standing committees. We are going to shift the order, because Councilmember Cunningham has one of many meetings he has been convening and attending about public safety. So we will begin with the Public Health and Safety Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, colleagues, for your flexibility with reordering the committees. So the Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward six items for approval today. The first is a contract with the University of Minnesota Veterinary Medical Clinic for Police Canine Health Services. The second is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for tree planting in North Minneapolis. Item number three is accepting a grant from Youth Prize for, in Hennepin County, for our school-based clinic health education program. Item number four is accepting a grant from Hennepin County, the amount of $5,000, for the Children's Mental Health Collaborative COVID-19 Provider Relief Fund. Item number five is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health for the Safer Sex Intervention Project. Item number six is a passage of resolution authorizing funding to support the city's community safety engagement efforts and amending the 2020 General Appropriation Resolution. Colleagues, there is a technical amendment that is being brought forward related to this, to this resolution, item number six. So I will move approval of all six items, including with the amendment, to item number six.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? I don't see any. I will just briefly comment on this item. I've never seen anything so stuck in our bureaucracy, but together with the chair and vice chair, I'm glad that we have been able to finally get this work staffed, responding to the resolution that we unanimously passed on June 12th. I think our community has been really crying out for an opportunity to get involved in this, so we now have the pieces in place needed to make that happen. And I think with great thanks to Council Vice President Jenkins, we have now separated out the truth and reconciliation work, which I think will help clarify the two processes as separate as they should and need to be. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. And as we noted, Councilmember Cunningham may need to leave before the meeting is over for one of the meetings he's been convening about public safety, so thank you, Councilmember, for all of your work in that area. This brings us back to the regular order of our reports for standing committees. We'll go back to the committee report from Business, Inspections, Housing, and Zoning, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the council. The Business, Inspections, Housing, and Zoning Committee is bringing 13 items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a change to our consolidated action plan. Change that would allow us to use CDBG supplemental coronavirus aid for our homelessness response. Item number two is a redevelopment plan at 1928 Nicollet. Item three is an interim use permit for AICDC. Item four is a variance appeal that has been denied. This is an appeal at 5234th Avenue South. Item five are the liquor license approvals. Item six is a license settlement conference agreement. Item seven is a project refinancing for the Olson Townhomes. Item eight is supplemental funding for Avivo, so that they can operate the indoor shelter project. Item number nine is a loan for Avivo to support transitional recovery housing. This is a project at 1719 and 1727 East 18th Street. Item number eight is the environmental assessment worksheet for Abbott's Transportation Hub. Item number 11 is a rezoning for a variety of properties on 14th Avenue Southeast. Item number 12 is directing the Health Department to examine waiving outdoor amplified sound permits through the end of the calendar year. And item number 13 is an item that came forward through Minneapolis Forward, which is a restoration of the properties reduced to rubble appropriation. This is appropriating $2 million to assist with the cleanup of properties on Lake Street that did not have sufficient insurance, or in some cases, any insurance. With that, I'll move items 1 through 13 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? I don't see any. I do want to just highlight, of all the things here, there are three items that are so important to getting our unhoused neighbors safely indoors. The snow is actually flying out the window, or was when I, you know, a half hour or so ago, when our meeting began, and so the urgency is real. And we have some really great ideas coming from the community, including the tiny homes. So thanks to Councilmember Goodman for all of her work, and then all of the foundational work that has happened over the years, including last year's zoning code amendment that allows for this kind of cluster development, the zoning changes that are underway, which will make it easier to house folks in all kinds of shelter and supportive housing, like single-room occupancy hotels and additional tiny homes. So thanks to everyone for these efforts, especially the staff at CPAD, who've been working so hard to get all of this in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano. Councilmember Palmasano. Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Policy and Government Oversight Committee, given by the Chair, Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy and Government Oversight Committee brings forward 18 items today. Item number one is an ordinance extending the CenturyLink cable television franchise. Item number 2 through 11 are various contract amendments for the public service building project. The details are listed on the agenda. Items, item number 12 is the acceptance of a bid from RJM Printing for signs and wayfinding for the public service building project. Item number 13 is an image license agreement with Star Tribune for the use of images at the PD Plaza. Item number 14 is a contract amendment with the Federal Reserve Bank for an economic study, impact study of the city's minimum wage ordinance. Item number 15 is authorizing the city attorney's office to prepare or join an amicus brief on behalf of the ACLU of Minnesota in a case pending before the Minnesota Court of Appeals, which deals with the voting rights of convicted felons. Item number 16 is three resolutions authorizing retirement incentive plans for 2020 and 2021. There is a technical amendment that I need to make on these motions, which Councilmember Palmasano
which Councilmember Palmasano alluded to at our meeting on Wednesday. And I believe the tech team can display the motion. But these amendments fix the payroll payout timeline as well as clarifies how these payments are made in the case of an employee's death. And I do just want to thank staff for really taking the extra time to make sure we got all of these things correct before this incentive plan is adopted and and listening to input from city employees and incorporating that in real time. Item number 17 is several actions related to the Federal Cares Act funding. Item number 18 is the establishment of a truth and reconciliation process for the city of Minneapolis, which you mentioned, Council President, really separates this work out from the public safety work that my colleagues and staff has been working really hard on all summer long. So I'm really happy to bring that forward today. And with that, I move approval of the POGO, or Policy Government Oversight Committee, report, including the amendment to item number 16.
Thank you. Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Finally, we have the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee presented by the Chair Councilmember Reich.
Good morning. Transportation Public Works Committee will forward 11 items today. Item one is the water sewer and service repair assessment. Number two is the Special Service District proposed services and charges. Three is the solid waste definition ordinance, which will assist the department's work moving forward. Four is the agreement with Canadian Pacific for utility occupancy license for the storm sewer project at Columbia Park. Five is the contract amendment with Hennepin County for residential recycling grant. Six is a contract amendment with the Thomas &amp; Sons Incorporated for Hennepin Avenue Water Main Construction Project. Seven is the Minnesota Green Corps Program application to host a Green Corps member for the 2020-2021 program year. Eight is the National Association of City Transportation Officials' grant for bus lane project implementation. Nine is the Johnson Street Northeast, Lowry Avenue to 18th Avenue Northeast Street Reconstruction Project. Ten is the bid for the Irving Avenue Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. And 11 is the bid for hauling and disposal of dirt, snow, and asphalt millings. Madam President, I move all items as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk will call the... In breast cancer, like so many other things, so it's all there in the resolution. And thanks to everyone who works so hard to support folks who are going through treatment and survivors and their families. The second item is a resolution honoring and recognizing the history, lived experience, and legacy of North Minneapolis residents along the Penn Plymouth Corridor. And I will turn it over to Councilmember Ellison for this resolution.
Thank you so much, Council President. Pull this resolution up quickly here. So just quickly, I really want to thank, I really want to thank Joymar Stevens and her team and Ebony Adadeo really for pursuing this work and for working with the various vendors and and putting these stories out there. And so it's Councilmember Cunningham still on the call with this?
Yes, I am for a couple more minutes.
Yeah, okay. All right. So I'll begin and maybe halfway through, if you're able, Councilmember Cunningham, I'll let you do the latter half, so. Honoring and recognizing the history, lived experience, and legacy of North Minneapolis residents along the Penn Plymouth Corridor. Whereas North Minneapolis has historically been the site of legendary creativity, a working class work ethic, and the home to the city's Black community. And whereas North Minneapolis has also been the target of steep disinvestment and structural racism in the form of police brutality, redlining, a lack of employment opportunities, and a lack of youth opportunities. And whereas the Plymouth Avenue uprising of 1967 was a reaction to those inequities and demonstrated a refusal to accept them. And whereas community assets like the Way Community Center that were established to elevate needs were demolished to make room for the current fourth police precinct, and access to the Mississippi River was impeded by the construction of Highway I-94. And whereas the killings of residents such as Joymar Clark and George Floyd by police caused unrest, mirroring the Plymouth Avenue uprising of 1967, and again, serves as a reminder that the last 50 years have not triggered an undoing of harm to Black communities in Minneapolis. And...
Yes.
Would you be willing to take?
Yes. Whereas the Division of Race and Equities Recast Program has three main goals: to increase trust and understanding between community residents and city staff, to provide opportunities for healing and capacity building for community residents and city staff, and to create opportunities for community residents and city staff to engage and share decision-making. And the Northside Oral History Project serves to honor the history of North Minneapolis as well as pursue the goal of the goals of the Division of Race and Equities Recast Program that were crafted by the Recast Minneapolis Advisory Team consisting of staff and community representatives. And whereas arts artists and storytellers such as 4,000 More Creative, Insight News, Juxtaposition Arts, Franklin Middle School, Franklin Middle School, Charles Caldwell, Teeny Wells, Wells, and Bully Creative collaborated with Northside institutions such as Masjid Al Noor, Liberty Community Church, Oak Park, Pillsbury, and Northside Residents Redevelopment Council to collect 90 stories of elders and longstanding community members that were then turned into art projects representing the community's narratives of resistance and perseverance and triumph. And whereas oral storytelling is a longtime Black American tradition honed and perfected by the griots of West Africa surviving the Middle Passage and passed down, passed down through the generations. And whereas the artist storytellers and institutional partners involved in this project have a deep understanding of this tradition and its meaning to the Black community. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby both honor and recognize the history of North Minneapolis residents in the Penn Plymouth Corridor. Further, the mayor and city council recognize that honoring these stories provides us with a viable pathway forward to bring sustainable change to North Minneapolis, putting an end to the harm that has been made characteristic of this community over the last century and investing in the community in a way that benefits residents that currently live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Both our incredible team of council members representing North Minneapolis. I've seen how hard both of you are working right now through all of this, all of this stress and trauma and pain in our community. And the Northside is dealing with the pandemic and the economic crisis and social unrest and all the things that the resolution so beautifully captured. So thank you for your leadership. You have my full support always, and I know we are all behind you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And first of all, I just want to say happy anniversary and congratulations to you and to all breast cancer survivors. As we recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month, cancer sucks. And just congratulations to all of the survivors for fighting and particularly to you. You know, I know that, you know, you are you are carrying your first child and still and running for office and doing all of these things. It just really is a testament to the human spirit, so congratulations. Secondly, I did want to just say how deeply I support this resolution and thrilled that it is coming through on the same day that that we have passed this resolution supporting truth and reconciliation. I was really hoping at our presentation at POGO to be able to share some of the creative work that went into this process because a big part of the truth and reconciliation process is for to give opportunity and platform for our community to share their stories, their stories of pain, their stories of joy and achievement, as well as documenting that history for future generations. As many of you know, I was an oral historian at the University of Minnesota, documenting the lives and histories of transgender and gender nonconforming people before joining the Minneapolis City Council. And so, you know, I know and I recognize the deep importance of capturing those oral histories and documenting that and telling our stories. It builds, I think, faith. It builds, it empowers our community to continue to strive and reach forward. So thank you both for bringing forward this resolution, and I'm happy to support it. I do want to say I hope that we can, in some way, I'm sure there will be public displays of all of this work, but I hope that we can bring it to the council, particularly during the truth and reconciliation process, to be able to highlight some of the issues and concerns that that we're trying to bring forward. So happy to support this, and thank you all for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you, Council Vice President. Seeing none, I will move approval of the resolutions and ask the Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those resolutions are adopted. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business. We have one item that was postponed from our last meeting related to the commercial property sale ordinance through the Biz Committee. And I will recognize either the Chair, Councilmember Goodman, or Councilmember Gordon, the author, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. We're not ready to bring this forward. We've done some stakeholder engagement, held a very interesting meeting. I would like to leave this on the unfinished business while we see if we can address concerns and continue our stakeholder engagement. I'm hopefully coming back next council meeting with likely a substitute, but with bringing this forward for consideration.
Thank you. I'll take that.
Do I have to make a motion to do that? Because I'm happy to make a motion if required. Well, I'll move to continue to postpone this item.
Councilmember Gordon has moved to postpone the item under unfinished business. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that item is postponed. We do have a closed session with two items, but when we do that, I always forget to ask for announcements when we come back. So I will pause here and note that we have a closed session with two items. The first will be a litigation matter of Brightenson versus the City of Minneapolis Fire Department. And the second is related to a security briefing for polling places in the 2020 presidential election. Before we turn it over to the city attorney and take those actions, I want to see if there are any announcements from council members at this time. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. Related to the introduction that I made today, I just wanted to make everyone aware that we are hosting a panel discussion on Thursday, the 22nd, at 5:00. That'll be online. It'll include local and national experts on the topic of facial recognition. So for those of you who are wanting to learn more about it before we bring it forward to council for action, I would encourage you or your staff to attend, and please publicize to your constituents.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Clerk, is there anything you want to share about our elections activities?
Madam President, thank you. I'll always brag about the elections team who are doing incredible work to ensure ballot access for all Minneapolis voters. As reported, we are seeing record turnout for the early voting. In fact, I anticipate that by Monday, Tuesday at the latest, it's highly probable that Minneapolis will surpass the 100,000 mark, 100,000 absentee ballots. That would set a new all-time record in terms of the number of early votes being cast by Minneapolitans prior to Election Day. So very excited about the very, very strong turnout that we have seen thus far during the early voting period and very, very proud of our elections crew, which numbers 2,500 strong between the six full-time administrators who work year-round and all of our seasonal staff, temporary workers, and the men and women who staff the polls on Election Day, our election workers. They're incredible people doing incredible work. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thanks so much to the staff for working so hard to support folks. And in the middle of a pandemic with record numbers of people voting, it's really incredible. I'm so proud of our team and our city. I don't see any other announcements. So with that, I will ask, going back to the closed session, I will ask the City Attorney's Office to please let us know why we may close the city council meeting for these two items.
Thank you, Council President Bender. As you alluded to, there are two items related to the need for a closed session. The first item is related to the case of Brinteson versus City of Minneapolis. The case is in active litigation. And accordingly, under the Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, subdivision 3B, the council may, upon proper motion, close the meeting for purposes of attorney-client communication. And in considering this motion, the council should weigh the right of the public to know what is what its government is doing against the need of the city to preserve the confidentiality of its discussions with its attorneys. The second item on the agenda related to the closed session is the receipt of an election security report or briefing. And under the Minnesota Open Meetings Law, Minnesota Statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3D, meetings may, upon proper motion, be closed to receive security briefings or and reports. to receive security briefings and reports to discuss issues related to security systems, to discuss emergency response procedures, and to discuss security deficiencies in or recommendations regarding public services, infrastructure, and facilities if disclosure of the information discussed would pose a danger to public safety or compromise security procedures or responses. Financial issues related to security matters must be discussed, and all related financial decisions must be made at an open meeting. So before closing the meeting under this section, you must, in describing the subject to be discussed, refer to the facilities, systems, procedures, services, or infrastructures to be considered during the closed meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will move that the meeting may be closed pursuant to the Open Meeting Law, Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3B, to discuss the litigation matter of Brightinson versus the City of Minneapolis Fire Department, and 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3D, to discuss security for polling places for the 2020 presidential election, as explained by the city attorney. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. The clerk will call the roll on closing the meeting.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and we will move to the closed session. We will reconvene back here after the closed session. For my colleagues, that means you'll end this meeting and rejoin the one specific for the closed session. Thank you.
which is the reconvene after the closed session. It's 11:54 if you would like to reconvene us.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. As noted, we are back from the closed session. I will ask the clerk to record that we have a quorum for this back-up meeting back on the record. Mr. Clerk?
Yep.
Okay.
I will call the roll. Madam President, I'm sorry, that's my fault. I'll call the roll and go from there. Councilmember Osmond?
Present.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present.
Councilmember Ellison?
Present.
Councilmember Goodman?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
I'm here.
Councilmember Kano? Councilmember Reich?
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Here.
Councilmember Schrader?
Here.
Vice President Jenkins?
Here.
Councilmember Kano? President Bender?
Here.
There are 12 members present.
The record reflect that we do have a quorum. I am happy to make the motion on item one from our closed session that would reflect the staff recommendation. I don't believe we have a written version of a staff recommendation, but I will check.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of a motion available to share, but this is the authorization of the issue in the litigation matter of Britton versus City of Minneapolis Fire Department. That litigation matter includes a settlement of up to an amount not to exceed $500,000.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm happy to make that motion, which reflects the staff recommendation in the matter of Britton versus City of Minneapolis Fire Department for a settlement of up to $500,000. Is there a second?
Second.
The clerk will -- is there any discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Osmond?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano? Councilmember Reich?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader?
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano? President Bender?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted. That completes all of our business for today. So I will, unless there is objection, declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for the great work this cycle. And everyone who hasn't yet, please remember to go vote. We are adjourned.